Welcome one and all to Isle Palm City Council. Today is Tuesday, the 23rd of July. I'd like to welcome each and every one of you, and I'd like to acknowledge that both the press and the public were duly notified in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. If you would, please join me as I say a prayer to be followed by our collective allegiance, and then roll call. Dear Heavenly Father, I thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here tonight. Now that we have passed the peak of the summer season, I ask that you please look over our city family, over our city island residents, our visiting guests. Lord, as we enter this hurricane season, I ask that you look over and protect not only our island paradise, but all coastal communities from the wrath of Mother Nature's most destructive events. Oh Lord, look over both our public safety personnel and our military and their families who all sacrificed protecting us here and around the world. I thank you for life itself and for our individual liberties and freedom. I ask for your guidance and wisdom tonight in our governing our city and making decisions that affect our residents and visitors for not only now, but for future generations. It is in your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Full allegiance to the God of the United States of America, the true republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a tough one here. Isle Palm City Clerk, Ms. Marie Copeland, her last time at bat, calling roll call.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember McKannon.
Here.
Councilmember Forens.
Here.
Councilmember Moy.
Here.
Councilmember Kinghorn.
Howdy.
Um, Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
And Mayor Carroll.
I am here.
Administrator.
Here.
And Assistant Attorney Paul Rackett.
Here.
Thank you.
Um, if y'all don't mind, just, I'd like everybody to give Marie a, number one, she made the front page, the Voltry News, on the upper front side of the page. I made the lower side. But she's given us 12 years of service here in Isle Palms, and we cannot thank her enough because she has to put up all of this and all of our comments and decipher everything that we say, sitting in a room going, "Who said that and who said what?" So anyway, let's give her a big hand.
Oh, mighty beautiful. We'll have a decorated table tonight. If I could take a minute, I would like to tell you all, it's been a pleasure with, I don't know how many councilmembers, I haven't tried to count up how many I've worked with, and three mayors. You've all been wonderful, you've been very kind and very thoughtful, and at times it's a little bit difficult. But it has been an honor and a pleasure, and I do thank you all.
Thank you. Also, before we really get started, we've got a lot of police in fire here. Last night, we had an emergency call for a four-month-old baby in cardiac arrest, and they were there to save that baby, and the baby is alive with us today. Again, big hand. Act Two. The Department of Administration is open for new employees. I'm gonna walk out in front, and as I call your name.
Mayor, we need a motion.
Second.
Thank you. All mayors, aye.
I'm gonna miss you.
First up at bat is William Farrell, otherwise known as Liam. If you're here for your family, please bring him forward.
You can stand in the middle, so that your right hand is with you left hand on the button. I, William Farrell, do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
I, William Farrell, do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinances of the City of Isle Palms.
According to ordinances.
Ordnances of the City of Isle Palms. To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
Perform the duties of the position of which I have been selected.
And that I will.
That I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
So a little background on Liam. William's out the door. Like, the mayor's, not mayor's, Jimmy. Liam lives in Jameson with Meredith White. He is a former lifeguard for Harvey Cedar's Beach Patrol in LBI, New Jersey, and worked in advertising in Manhattan for several years before joining the Fire Services. He has a degree in marketing from Seton Hall University. We always ask, is there anything interesting? Liam has been playing the drum since he was five. Andy White, former drummer for the Beagles, was his instructor.
Wow.
Liam is currently performing guitar and vocals in a local reggae band. He loves to try, will surf anywhere there is open ocean. Welcome aboard Isle Palm. Hey.
How are you?
How are ya? Welcome. I, Andrea, what was your name? I, Andrea Harrison, do solemnly swear.
I, Andrea Harrison, do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
According to the ordinances of the City of Isle Palms.
To perform the duties of the position.
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
Welcome aboard. Now, a little background, context. A native South Carolinian, has been a small business owner for over a decade. What was that?
Hospitality and tourism, corporate trips.
Welcome to Isle Palm. Happy married with three small children, adult children. Adult children. Very proud of her children, daughter Virginia, full stack engineer, founding engineer for a startup. Son Andrew, merchant mariner, drives a 200-ton seagoing vessels and is a professional diver. And son Patrick, tennis pro and pro shop manager, a local. Sorta. Sorta. She loves working with the Isle Palm community and wants to see it thrive while maintaining the character of a small community and living. Interesting, we ask, and she goes, "I'm a local historian, a group speaker. My ancestry goes back to the 1690 Charlestown." Wow. My grandfathers were capers, my youngest son's name capers, Hamlin, Barksdale, Legree, Rag, Debedu, et cetera. So I am basically related to the entirety of old Charleston and Mount Pleasant, including Christopher "Don't Treadle Me" Gaston, Gaston Flag, and Samuel Rag, kidnapped by Blackbeard. Welcome aboard. Thank you. Darren. Darren Hamilton. How you doing, Darren?
Good.
Welcome aboard. Okay. Come on, but you gotta get up here. You make us look good. I, Darren Hamilton, do solemnly swear. That I am duly qualified. According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms. To perform the duties of the position. Perform the duties. Of the position. To which I have been selected. And that I will. To the best of my abilities. Discharge the duties thereof. So help me God. Now, read back. So bad, wasn't it? I know. But it's a small community, you're gonna love everybody out here. You've got a great group to work with. Darren, most recently. Is your wife? We are glad to have him aboard. It's a city family. Darren, most recently worked for the Folly Beach Public Works Department and is very experienced in public sector. Darren is married to Jamie and has two boys, Toddler, 16, and Darren, 7. He loves fishing and absolutely is enthusiastic about classic cars. And we noticed somebody might have one for sale. Welcome aboard. Thank you so much.
I, Joshua Anderson.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
To perform the duties of the position.
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Welcome aboard. Joshua's originally from Kentucky and moved to Charleston area in March 2019. He is engaged and looking forward to his fiancee finishing nursing school and moving to Charleston in August. Soon?
Yes.
Real soon. Joshua, as a child, was a child abuse investigator for the state of Kentucky, a parole officer for the state of Ohio. He graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Eastern Kentucky University in 2013, and in 2015 graduated from Eastern Kentucky University again with his master's degree in criminal justice. Anything interesting? Joshua is an avid bowler and golfer. So, welcome aboard Isle Palm, you have a good spot. Dylan Graham.
How you doing? Welcome.
Here we go. How are ya? We're glad to have him.
I, Dylan Graham.
I, Dylan Graham.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
To perform the duties of the position.
To perform the duties of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
Discharge the duties thereof, so help me God.
Very good. Thank you. Now, the fun part, the big talk part. Dylan worked at Dorchester County Detention Center and also worked with his dad building docks around the Low Country. In the off time, we got lots of docks. Dylan is in a relationship with Taylor Murray. He is Army National Guard. He loves being outdoors, boating, fishing, hunting, and recently received a jet ski from his dad as a gift for graduating from the academy, so he can't wait to get out in a water. So, Chief Graham, watch out for her because she is fast to the water. So, welcome aboard. Thank you. Christopher Sanders. Of course, always in the back corner.
He goes up with you, too.
I, Christopher Sanders.
I, Christopher Sanders.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
Do solemnly swear that I am duly qualified.
According to the ordinance of the City of Isle Palms.
According to the ordinances of the City of Isle Palms.
To perform the duties of the position to which I have been selected.
To perform the duties of.
Of the position.
Of the position.
To which I have been selected.
To which I have been selected.
And that I will.
And that I will.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge the duties thereof.
Discharge the duties thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, let's get some background on them. Started law enforcement career. Y'all, come on. This is a big moment. Now, who's this young man?
My son Caleb.
How are you? We're glad to have your dad. Started law enforcement, Charleston County Sheriff's Office in 2010, originally from Virginia Beach, Virginia, moved to Charleston in 2005, and has 11-year-old son, Caleb. Was originally assigned to patrol and was promoted to investigator in 2017 at the sheriff's office. He was assigned to the forensics unit at Criminal Investigations until he left in 2019. He has a wide variety of knowledge in dealing with violent crimes, criminal investigations to include homicides, terrorist bombings, and investigations, interviewing and interrogation techniques, sexual assault cases, body language, and deception, cybercrimes, shooting reconstruction, human remains recovery, and human trafficking. He is an explorer advisor at the sheriff's office and has been since 2015, programmed to teach his kids that want a career in law enforcement, how to police. Just became an uncle for the first time in June to his nephew Liam. Enjoy surfing. Glad to have you over here on even spots. Beach and photography. He is currently a field trainer, instructor, and patrol division for the Isle Palms Police Department. Welcome aboard. Okay. On to number three, reading of journals of previous meetings. We got regular meeting of June 25th, special meeting of July 5th, special meeting of July 16th. Do I hear a motion to approve all three?
Yes.
Second?
Second.
Any discussions? Hear none? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous?
Unanimous.
Citizens' comments. And before we get into them, we've got a representative with Dominion Energy regarding tree trimming on the Isle Palms. And I say, "Why are y'all talking about that right now?" Well, we watched Mount Pleasant, we watched Sullivan's own, so we're trying to head it off at the pass. So we want to try to educate our residents in Isle Palms on what's coming down the pass. So we have with us today, Bill Turner, Clay Chaplin, and Jennifer Hightower. And if y'all want to come up?
Oh, I see.
And give us a little education on tree trimming, why we do it, how often we do it, and all that kind of good stuff.
Good evening, Jennifer Hightower, Dominion Energy. And Desiree McCarroll were so thoughtful to come to the Mount Pleasant meeting that we had to learn a little bit more about the process as we move forward with the project. Eventually, we'll make its way up here to Isle Palms. And because I am not the subject matter expert, I brought two folks with me this evening. Bill Turner, who's our Vice President of Electric Operations for Dominion Energy, South Carolina, and Clay Chaplin, who is one of our foresters in this area. They're gonna go through this presentation, which you have, I believe, in your packets, go through that and then answer any questions that you guys might have about the project and see what happens. Turn it over to them.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to talk about this area, the port work that we are getting ready for to embark on our journey to get to Isle Palm. Probably need to ask, do I need to stand about a microphone?
It wouldn't be nice.
Yes, please.
I might try to pull it out here.
Certainly.
That's why I asked her.
If you could pull up, there you go.
Thank you. There you go. Before I start with this, I do want to kind of shout out a big thank you here to the administration over many, many years that has helped us to build the infrastructure that we have in place today with the substation. Back over here, Officer Oliver, you remember when it wasn't here and your point of service came from Mount Pleasant over on Bid Sawyer Boulevard near Center Street? And so that line traveled down to Bid Sawyer, across the intercoastal, all the way to Sullivan's, all the way down Sullivan's, all the way down to Isle Palms, all the way to Wildunes on the end. It includes weeds, capers, bulls, and little bulls on the far end of that. So having a source point here for service is extremely important, especially during any type storm or hurricane event that we may have. And on top of that, recently, I think as you know, because you all work with us to put this in place, but we have a second transmission feed that comes into that substation from the north part of Mount Pleasant. So not only is there a substation here, but it has multiple feeds. So if one of those feeds is interrupted, we can switch there remotely. We don't have to have personnel here to do that switching. So even though there may be an outage, we can re-energize the system very quickly. And so along with that, we talked about two basic things at Dominion Energy. One of those is safety and the other is reliability. Safety is our number one priority, number one concern without question. Safety of our employees, safety of your employees, first responders that would be in and around a situation, customers, general public. And tree trimming helps with all of those type things. So we are, we try to do this on a proactive basis. Generally, it's gonna be on a five-year cycle.
I'm gonna ask you to use this, please.
Okay. All right. So generally on a five-year cycle, and, but it could be, it depends on the area that we're looking at. So I've got some slides up here that I hope everybody can see. I'll move over to the side. I think the members here in the audience have paper copies as well. So first of all, we measure our reliability with an index that we call SADI. So it's a big, it's an acronym for a lot of bunch of words up there, but it basically is the average number of minutes that any given customer on our system is without power during a year. So if you look up here, our numbers are in blue. Peers throughout the state that we compare ourselves to are in green. And one thing that you're gonna notice about this, and here's a little bigger chart that shows these numbers, but the slope is downward, which is a good thing. And a lot of this is attributed to tree trimming, proactive things that we do on a cycle such as inspection of our circuits, which includes poles, pag mount transformers, cables, overhead, underground transformers, streetlights, everything that goes along with the system. So that's done on a 10-year cycle. And so anything that has rot or might rot within a five-year period is gonna be replaced. That's what causes this line to go down. So for last year, it was 96. Right now, we're gonna track at about 42 minutes of SADI time, so that's through six months. If you put that, assume that that's gonna happen through the rest of the year, and that gives us in the 84 to 85-minute timeframe. And that is extremely good compared to our peers. So this is what we're working toward with safety being our number one priority, and then this reliability number here. So every single outage that we have is counted to come up with that number right there. So every customer, and we have customers that are out zero times throughout the year for zero minutes, and we have customers that are out 10 times for 120 or 500 minutes, whatever the case may be. So we have those on both sides. Obviously, the ones that have the longer outages, we're looking to try to figure out how we can improve the system or improve their service and their reliability. Very quickly here, this is just general terms and conditions. It basically says that if you take our service, you give us the right to put our facilities on your property. And if you don't, then we'll take them off your property and not give you service. That's basically what it says. Just some basic information here about the project that we have coming up. And we've met with Desiree, and we've gone over this with her in the past. We do have a public workshop that is coming up shortly. We've got the date on here, I think it's in August. Okay. And so we'll be available, and we'll have detailed maps to show anyone who would like to come and look and see and ask questions. If there's a specific tree on your property that you'd like to ask questions about, we'll have the opportunity to discuss that as well. About 80 miles of distribution line on the island, and 18 miles within the city of Isle Palms. Some of that is doubled, and so that's why there's a difference here in numbers. Loose Tree will be our contractor, and they did this work last time in 2014. They're doing the work in Mount Pleasant right now. They should have finished today in Mount Pleasant, moving over to Sullivan's as well, coming down Jasper Boulevard, which is the main pathway to get over to Isle Palms for backup service. Mentioned that there. We think it's gonna be late August, it might be early September, when we start the work. So we're kind of doing a rotation coming from Mount Pleasant, working through Sullivan's, coming down to Isle Palms, just a natural run there. We do send out notifications to all customers connected to our system. So depending on whether you signed up for paperless billing or not, in that case, you'll get an email. If not, you'll get a paper postcard. And that will go out several weeks before we start the trimming. In some cases, it may be well in advance of the tree trimming. So customers get a lot of mail and get a lot of emails, so sometimes they forget about these things. But we do send them out in advance, and we try to stagger as best we can to let customers know when we will be coming to work there. Again, the tree trimming workshop will be on August 2nd here at, I think it's right here, 7.
It's at the rec center.
Rec center. Okay. So we will be available to answer questions. I think we've got about four or five more slides. I'm gonna ask Clay Chaplin to come up. He is a forester that works for us. We have two that work in the general Charleston area, which includes, this is part of our service territory in the general Charleston area. And so he's one of our foresters. He also is an arborist. And so you may have seen him, you may have talked to him in the past, but he will be with crews as a trim. We instruct them on things, you know, that they should do and should not do, and what to watch out for, whether this is an ornamental tree, whether it's a volunteer species that may have just sprouted up from an acorn or whatever the case may be. So this is his training, and this is what he does on a daily basis. So I'll ask him to come up, and then I'll kind of finish it out after Clay goes through his slides here. Thank you, Bill. All right. Yeah, I'm Clay Chaplin. I'm an arborist with the mayor. I'm also a registered forester in the state of South Carolina. I can't hardly see the words. Go to the next one. Thank y'all for having us here to talk. Okay, this is one of the biggest questions we get about our distribution clearing. It's gonna be the distances. These are the standard specifications that we trim to. We got a minimum of 10 to the side, a minimum of 10 below, a minimum of 20 above. You can see the full foot below the neutral when you're looking at your system. Typically, your primary wire's gonna be your highest wire. Your second wire's gonna be the neutral. And there's service lines. We get a lot of questions about service lines, and I know there's probably a lot of service lines over here on the island that need attention. We trim those for abrasion. They do not have the same clearance specifications that the primary wires have. We try to get a foot of clearance on the services for abrasion. So that's a question that we get quite often. Certain conditions do exist that preclude the specifications, and this is dealing directly with the larger trees, the live oaks, and other desirable species. The species takes into account the size, the diameters of the limbs, and we will have distances and clearances that are maybe more, maybe less than the stated specs, just depending on the situation. Especially in low village, you have a lot of larger trees. 10-foot, that's a long way. We don't always have that clearance on large trees. This is a figure here that was taken from the best management practice manual provided by the ISA, the International Society of Horticulture. This kind of explains the proper pruning techniques. So you would have, let's see, just have a pointer. Yeah, if I can get, I won't show it on there. At the top here, you would have your three primary wires. You have your vegetation growing into the lines. Your 10-foot clearance would be to the side. If you were to make a cut on either of the limbs, that would be leaving a stub, and that would be a very bad incorrect cut. It would not follow the ANZ standards, which I can mention that also. The correct cut would be to come back to the parent limb and make a proper cut. So that's just a figure that kind of drastically demonstrates how that ANZ trimming applies to utility. Here's another example of ANZ pruning. This is often where I get questions about the V-shaped trees, the L-shaped trees. They're all pruned back to those laterals. They're pruned back to the parent limbs, and they do take on a different structure than it would normally if the utility was not there. They are the approved methods.
The ANZ, I keep mentioning, that's the American National Standards Institute A300 standard that relates to tree pruning. There is a specific section regarding utility pruning that is in that A300. Have a few more slides with some pictures of some issues that do happen, the vegetation related. We have here where primary wire has come in contact with larger limbs. You can see the bone marks on the trees. You have all sorts of issues that happen when this occurs. You obviously have damage to vegetation, to your tree. Normally occurs with an outage. If it's burning that bad, there's probably an outage happening. If you have an outage that is this severe, there's probably some damage to the equipment. It may burn the line, you may have to restring some line, may damage to transformers. Any type of equipment that's in the nearby vicinity could be damaged. Since we're on the Isle of Palms, I've got to talk about some palm trees. We love palm trees. I absolutely love palm trees. But we will maintain them around power lines. They do not have the same structure as other trees. And once they reach a certain height, normally above the neutral wire, they become a very dangerous hazard. This was taken, I actually took this picture myself in the city of Charleston. This tree actually caught on fire. Fire department responded to it and notified us, and I had to go make this situation safe. And you can see, we actually have, there's three, it's a three-phase primary, and that is the neutral down there, and it burned. And it was pretty bad. It actually dropped embers over the ground, caught the ground on fire. And that can happen in any situation where a palm tree is above a certain height that is too close to the facilities. And now, if there are any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
All right, Bill, Clay, Jennifer, thank you, Mr. President. This is going to be a big one, and people aren't going to realize it until it really starts happening. So we are doing our best to get the word out there. Under our iopene.net website, latest news will have information about it. And as Bill alluded to, we're going to have a tree trimming workshop on August 2nd from 5 to 7 at Ala Palms Recreation. Your representatives, there you are, from Dominion Energy, as well as contractors, will be performing work, will be on hand to answer questions, discuss safety, reliability, and proper pruning methods. We saw what was going on in Mount Pleasant, and they put a stop work order on there. Desiree and I and Mayor Neal and Andy Binkin went over there to listen in on the discussions. So we appreciate y'all coming out here and helping us with our residents, better understand what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank y'all very much.
Also, before y'all leave, I just want to let everybody know that the map that shows their work areas is online, and that Dominion Energy is more than willing to meet with citizens that may have live oaks within their property and have some questions prior to the work commencing. So we're encouraging folks, there's contact information there, we're encouraging folks to contact them, and they'll go to their house and meet with the citizens ahead of time to answer any questions, address any concerns. And we're trying to put the word out so if everybody can help us share the word and take everybody to that location on the website where all that information is available.
And to add to that, Desiree, what will happen is in that email or either in the postcard, there'll be our P-100 number for our contact center. So what we would encourage residents to do is to call that number and request a visit. And that way, we can tally these up and kind of know general areas or pockets where people are going to be, and that way, we can make it a more efficient process to come out. So we may not, you know, more than likely, we're going to start on that end of the island, right? And we're going to work our way this way. So if you're this way in Forest Trails and you call in, we probably aren't going to come see you first, but if you're over here on this end of the island, we'll come see you first to deal with the situation that you have. So if there is something that you want to talk about, you want us to come out and look at something with you prior to trimming, then that's the best way to do it there.
Thank y'all so much for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir. Thank you, members of council. Thank you.
Okay, back to citizens' comments. Yes, sir.
Come on. Thank you.
Name and address.
So I'm on this one? Okay. Oh. My name is Katrina Lindbach. I live at Five Dock Lane. I'm a local business owner. So last summer, shortly after launching our Ala Palms cleanup crew, you guessed it, we're talking trash, I sent an email to the Public Works Committee, I thought we were something to do with Mayor and the city administrator as well, regarding a possible campaign to maybe put a lid on these trash cans. We've heard a lot from people who have attended our beach sweeps as well as residents. I know you all know the Ala Palms Facebook page and community pages, you know, always has suggestions because people don't live back there. And we've heard a lot of people interested in possibly putting lids on trash cans or and/or waiting in the trash cans. So at the time, last year in July, I did a lot of research to see if there was something that was compatible with the way that our trash pickup is currently working so that there wouldn't be a lot of work involved in changing that. And I found a trash can, which is right over here. I know, this is modified and showing. So we found this trash can, and it works with the current load impact truck. I mean, I haven't demonstrated it myself, but it's here now. The main concern really is that these trash cans are overflowing sometimes. People are putting excessively large items in there, and it fills up really quickly. Also, they're very lightweight, the ones that we currently have down in Front Beach and all over the whole island, and they dump over, you know, my work with our business on the island with the chairs and the weekly beach sweeps, we've been seeing a lot of that bailing issue. So when I brought this to Public Works, well, the big setback was the hefty price. They retail for $3.50. I contacted the company directly to see what you could do at some sort of volume, and we could get it landed at $2.80. I had a really good idea that I'd like to offer the council, an idea that I'm offering really to Spearhead if y'all would accept, and that would be, local businesses and residents are always looking for a way to give back, get involved with the community, and especially, you know, this tiny little island. I would love to empower them by offering sponsorships to put a lid on trash campaign to help fund these trash cans. As a business owner resident myself, I would not think twice to donate $280 for one trash can to keep some of this litter from getting on our beaches and in our oceans. And in fact, I did already. And here it is. So I'm going to leave it. I don't really know what y'all want me to do with it, but here it is. It's here for you to try it out. It's big, it's bulky, and it's heavy, so it, you know, it doesn't flip. But I'm just suggesting that we try to do this and get it at least on Front Beach, or at least the main axis is on Front Beach to start, do a trial. Again, I'm happy to try to head a sponsorship campaign so that it doesn't cost the city anything in their budget, which I know we're concerned about. So thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Hello. I wish I could be as pleasant as Katrina there. So my name is Michael Fim. I'm with Title Wave Water Sports. I'm here with my brother and my other business partner, Michael Malley. I want to start off this speech by saying that collectively, you guys as council have been the best council I've ever worked with. This is the first council that ever has taken the time to call me, to meet with me, to actually get to know what our business is about. We've never, ever had that before, and I, you know, I appreciate that, and I know my brother and Malley appreciate it just as much. You know, summertime is very stressful for us. We work seven days a week, sometimes dawn to dusk and then some. On July 2nd, I apologize, I had to leave real property early. We had probably one of the worst things that you could have happen. We had our parasail boat engine blow up, essentially. So the night before, we spent going to our warehouse and swapping one engine to one boat to another. It involved cranes and forklifts. It wasn't fun. Now, this forced us on July 5th to purchase a new engine package. It was $72,000. We used this from our operating funds. Now, we don't make a lot of money despite what some people think, but since that day, we've been trying to get a loan for this. And, you know, I've had a couple bankers that we've worked with over the years, and we've been denied for the first time ever. And both of the reasons were our lease. They know we only have one year left. So, you know, despite next year, we won't be able to get through the winter without getting this loan. You know, to make matters worse, we received two letters, well, an email and a letter from the city days apart. You know, it was just bad news upon bad news. First, we received an email stating that our request to use the Morgan Creek Grill slips was going to be denied because of permitting due for 120 days. Secondly, we received a letter regarding the city's not intent to renew our lease. And I'll get back to this later, but first I want to touch on the Morgan Creek Grill docks. Now, I asked the city, I asked Desiree if there was a possibility. I mean, you guys all know what happened. If there was a variance, that could be granted. She said that she wasn't sure, but she would look into it. Well, I don't want to break the law. I mean, it was for 45 days. Did everything have to get so complicated with this? And I wouldn't have asked this if there wasn't already one there prior to. If you guys all remember, the fire department had the exact same slip, the exact same jet dock there for years, until they had some vandalism on the boat. And kind of full circle, my father was the one who bought it, and it's now sitting up at the Ashley River. So it was just, you know, it was weird that, you know, it had to become such a complicated thing. And I ask, is, does the city already possess a permit for a dock like this, a structure like this, and are just not aware of it? I mean, how was it, how did the fire department put it in and without a permit? You know, I don't know, and it's, you know, it was just something I wanted, I was hoping somebody could look into. Next, touching on our renewal letter. We received it on July 8th from the city, and it was stating that our lease was not going to be renewed. I was informed by Desiree that the notice was based on the wording from the vote during the April's city council meeting. Now, to note, all council meeting videos are posted onto the website, but as of July 8th, it hadn't been. Now, Desiree hurried up and got it for me, because it was, it was very important to us. That meeting was basically monumental to us. After reviewing it, I felt like we were correct. At 1 hour, 28 minutes, and 19 seconds of Part II, that meeting, Councilmember Bell made a motion to not renew the lease as written, and it was seconded by Sandy Ference, and thank you both. After a lengthy discussion, which was over 15 minutes, at 1 hour, 52 minutes, and 7 seconds, it was clearly stated the vote was to renew, not written. The council also said that there should be a full council workshop on what to do regarding our lease and that for Title Wave, and it should be done quickly. You know, our lease did have three renewals left, so it wasn't like that, you know, like Morgan Creek's. Now, that was the April meeting. There still hasn't been any meeting since there. There's been nothing. And October's creeping up, and, you know, I, just, October's creeping up, and that's kind of the drop dead date on everything. Now, I watched you guys debate back and forth this meeting. It was one of the most passionate meetings I've seen all of you have. You guys were compassionate, you cared, you understood our frustration, and I appreciate that as well. And it goes back to, this is the best council that I have ever dealt with, and again, I thank you that. Ultimately, you did vote not to renew our lease as written. However, we took hope from that and optimism from that meeting. Now, the letter that I received from Desiree was worded very differently and can be misinterpreted as to what council really wants to do. You know, and I ask, is the city going to rewrite a lease with us, or is it going to go out for bid? And I say this because during that meeting, Desiree clearly stated that any, that according to a city ordinance, that any new bid has to, any new lease has to go out for bid. You know, I mean, we still had more, you know, more renewals left, you know? I mean, we all didn't like the lease the way it was written. It had been written in '99 or pre-'99. But I thought that, you know, what we had presented to you as the possibility for new renewal was hit every mark. I mean, it was triple net, it was double, it was everything you guys had been asking for. Now, for clarity, okay, so we've been told many different things as to why this isn't occurring. One, we're waiting to see what happens with the restaurant bid. Now, I don't know what our bid, what our dock has to do with the restaurant, you know? There's a big parking lot that Brian Barrigan has till 2043 in between us. Additionally, I thought that Lee and Associates are only contracted to do the restaurant, not our area. So I just don't get why there's the wait. Additionally, permits from DEHEC, I don't even know where it is now, but, you know, it said it could be years. Now, for one, there is no permit. There was a permit from '95 to 2000, and nobody in this room was involved in that, not the city and not Title Wave. The original permit was between Wild Dune, Jod Harbor, and Stephen Billy's Title Wave Runners, okay? Secondly, has been repeatedly misstated that the old permit only allowed for eight jet skis. Now, actually, the permit was for 10 jet ski slips, not jet skis, just slips. And then it changed to eight because they wanted to take two of those slips and make them combined for a boat. Now, I don't know how this has gotten misinterpreted, but, you know, it, DEHEC does not regulate vessels in any way. And in fact, I called my attorney the other day, and it's the Linhardt Law Firm. I've been using Cody for a while, and he's the law firm that, his law firm just won the case in the offshore seismic testing, so they really know what they're doing, and I thank them for that. But again, the DEHEC doesn't regulate the number of vessels, so our lease with y'all is valid. You know, if we could have 20 there, they don't care. You guys would care, but they don't. So waiting for a permit, there's no permit concerns that could delay us from working together. I've met with DEHEC many times in the last 11 months, sometimes with my lawyer and sometimes with the city. During a recent walkthrough in which all parties were involved, including Desiree and I, we were verbally informed by the DEHEC representative that all of the compliance issues that I think Mark handed out from Catherine Kowalczek, it was an email, anyway, all those, they had no problem with it. In fact, we already finished the entire operations manual that included everything we needed to move forward. In fact, Malley, operations manual cost us a lot of money to put that thing together. Now, in the preface of, in that, I also, really quick, I asked for a water fountain, and I know that's a big deal because you guys just bought a water fountain. And they said, hey, we can work with you. So I've purchased a water fountain. So we have saved over 5,000 bottles already. Now, in the, in a permit application, which I have here, okay, and this is where the misinterpretation could have come up, and I asked my lawyer at length about this. So there's an area that says description of activities. That is actually filled out by the applicant, okay? And it's just a description of activities. Stephen Billy... Now, in the preface of the, in that, I also, really quick, I asked for a water fountain, and I know that's a big deal because you guys just bought a water fountain, and they said, hey, we can work with you. So I've purchased a water fountain. So we have saved over 5,000 bottles already. Now, in the, in a permit application, which I have here, okay? And this is where the misinterpretation has, could have come up, and I asked my lawyer at length about this. So there's an area that says description of activities. That is actually filled out by the applicant, okay? And it's just a description of activities. Stephen Billy just happened to fill out that they were using 10 wave runners, but it didn't preclude them from using more. You know, it was simply a statement that's coming now back to haunt us. So I just, I, I just hope you realize that as we're moving forward, okay? I'm gonna put this here for a second. Okay. Lastly, and I didn't mention this before, I wanted to touch on the audit, okay? I've never been through an audit, and I learned a lot from McKay Kitty, and they were very great and patient, and I don't know if y'all remember, but I had major surgery in the middle of the audit, and, I mean, I almost died. I didn't know it, but I almost died. So it took me a while. Now, our lease states that Title Wave only has to provide financial statements from our IOP location. And, you know, kind of because how we've been treated with this, with all this drag out and stuff, I didn't feel that you guys had the right to anything else. You know, I, we have a warehouse in which, it's a 15,000 square foot warehouse in North Charleston, and we subleased out parts, we have three other tenants, and in the wintertime, we run a jet ski maintenance shop out of it, but it's all done under Title Wave. You know, I mean, we're small business guys. I do the books, I taught myself. You know, I didn't know, I learned so much from them. I didn't know, in our lease, it didn't state that we had to run separate bank accounts for all this stuff. I had just categorized it by location and things like that, and, you know, I, it kind of painted us into a, we looked bad, and I didn't realize that we would ever look bad. I'd been turning my financials in to the city for years. And, you know, this has become so bad that, you know, I get a call from Douglas today asking me about how much business we do in Mount Pleasant, you know? I have, Mark, will you grab my, our Mount Pleasant, we've had Mount Pleasant business licenses since 2011, okay? I don't know, know what else I have to do to show you guys that we do other things. We run many charters from pickups location, from pickup locations throughout Charleston. We've been doing it since 2011 when we moved, we had a partnership with a company up in Myrtle Beach, and we hated it. So we moved our boat back here, and we were not allowed to use it here, understandable. So we had to do something with that. So we've been creative and tried to do other things, we've bought some other boats, and you know, now with all the online reservation software and reservation companies, we do pickups and harbor tours and things that have nothing to do with the Isle of Palms, okay? And again, I didn't know, you know, that I had to run separate bank accounts, separate whatevers, I mean, nobody ever taught me, and I apologize for that, and it has been rectified. I graciously thank Jimmy Ward for helping me find an accountant, and, you know, we really learned a lot from this. But it was weird that, you know, Douglas gave me that call, and it really hit wrong. You know, I mean, it's like, are you really that concerned about us that you're sending somebody out to spy on us and find out things? Now, we've had hundreds of supporters come out, and this is kind of going on a different topic, to show support, and, but it always seems like new issues continue to be created to slow or stop the process of Title Wave moving forward. Now, this is where I'm going all in, and there is a force driving, driving all of this. And I'm sorry to say, but that force is Randy Bell. He has shown many times during meetings and behind closed doors that he will stop at nothing to get rid of us.
Can I ask, is totally out of line?
No, it's not. I have, I have, please, it's not out of line, I am...
No, you are out of order.
No, I'm not.
Everybody, please, let's not use names, just keep as simple as we can.
Okay.
And not going back and forth.
Okay. Regarding our dock permit...
I'm gonna make one request. If he's gonna make comments like this, I'm gonna respond to those comments, otherwise he's out of order. This is not the place to have this discussion unless you can back it up.
You haven't heard what I had to say?
I already have.
No, you haven't.
Okay, please.
I just, please let me speak. Okay. So I'll keep it very, very brief then. Okay, I mean, that's citizens' comments, you're allowed to talk. Okay, during a real property meeting, I presented new lease terms, which eventually, which I eventually proposed to new full council. At 15:50 of that meeting, Mr. Bell said that he nor anyone at the city is interested in bidding our dock. However, in April's full council meeting, at 1 hour, 19 minutes, and 45 seconds, he goes back and states that our dock must go out for bid. He also states at that time that he couldn't, we couldn't make a bid package that only Title Wave could meet. At 1:28:50 of that meeting, he apologized for being the bad guy, but wants to give the bid process and reiterate how he is process oriented. Now, I ask, if you're gonna make a bid that only we can do, why would you go through the process and waste time anyway? At 13, at 1 hour, 38 minutes, and 44 seconds, Councilmember Rice kindly speaks on a timeline and compliments us on being good tenants to what's happening is just not fair to us. Randy, oh, sorry, interrupts Mrs. Rice and says, interesting this coming from the real property member who in 2017 recommended not to renew the Title Wave lease. Is she not allowed to change her mind? Why even bring it up? Now, getting back to the April real property meeting, I also had spoke about the community support.
Can you finish that?
I, two minutes. I'd also spoke about the community support we received in the survey. We had attained hundreds of signatures, and we're planning on doing a mail-out campaign. His rebuttal at 1 hour, 4 minutes, and 2 seconds, as for surveys, unless a survey gives perspective of if Title Wave was not there, then it is really not worth anything. At full council, at April's full council, we had a lot of supporters. Ted reiterated about the supporters that it was 20 to 1. Randy's response was, well, if I went on social media, I could have had just as many people with an opposing view. For the record, we didn't go on social media for any of that. These are examples of he is not listening to the city. He's not, he's not listening to the residents, folks, he's not.
Michael, just go ahead. I think we got the gist of it. And we do have citizens' comments, and historically, we try to keep them within a couple minutes. I think we've given you a lot of time to talk.
I'm speeding up for Mark and Riley. You know, there's three of us, I thought I could get my time here. I'm sorry.
I would ask the suspended rules of order, and at least make a response.
Listen, let's not, please.
Well, she's a judge and jury.
Okay, any other citizens' comments? Yes, sir. You were, you have been forever.
Stuart Coleman, 10 Live Oak Drive.
All right, let's just do this.
Stuart Coleman, 10 Live Oak Drive, in the Wildwood subdivision. I'm here representing the residents of the Wildwood neighborhood, and many of them are here today, tonight, to make our presence known, to state that we're opposed to the Wild Dunes plan to install an emergency gate off of Morgan's Cove Road onto Wildwood Road in our neighborhood. We're very concerned about this gate dumping traffic into our neighborhood. Wildwood Road is not a major thoroughfare like Palm Boulevard, which is State Highway 703, but it's a residential neighborhood with children, pets, and people who enjoy the quiet of our secluded neighborhood. Even though this is intended, this gate is intended for emergency use, traffic using a gate onto Wildwood Road would negatively impact ingress and egress for the Wildwood subdivision, which has no other access road, as well as affecting the other streets nearby. A meeting was held yesterday with all the parties involved, and an alternate access point was suggested, and this will be reviewed by Wild Dunes. This was suggested by our team. This plan would have little or to no impact on the Wildwood neighborhood. I'd like to thank David Konoski, the chief operating officer of Wild Dunes Community Association, for listening to our concerns and for taking our alternate proposal back to the Wild Dunes Safety Committee. We've addressed the Public Safety Committee and asked them to protect the Wildwood Road neighborhood and deny any requests by Wild Dunes for gate access to Wildwood Road. And we ask that the city council recommend the alternate route to protect the Wildwood neighborhood. The option presented should meet the needs of Wild Dunes development without impacting the Wildwood neighborhood and give them a solution to their emergency access problem within their own community. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir. And thank you everyone from Wildwood for coming. You ran him off, Gary?
It wasn't my fault. I'm a geologist.
Name an address, please.
Gary Nestler, 1722nd Avenue, La Palma, South Carolina, 29451. Thank you for hearing me. This really, I think, is directed towards a comment that has been made time and time again. This council has been outstanding, I believe, as compared to the other council members, not that they didn't do a great job, but I think together, you guys have sort of demonstrated a lot of fairness, certainly a lot of transparency. And I believe that watching what's happening now with Title Wave and Wild Dunes and what have you, I think that council, all, should consider those who are opposed to each other, who've had some heated discussions, Mr. Bell, Michael, and those. I think that somewhere along the line, as professionals, and I know Mr. Bell well, I know his past history in business, Mr. Kinghorn as well, I think that there is, if there's that much heat between these two entities, that any decisions that revolve around critical decisions for the city, such as potentially not renewing a lease, or potentially putting in or not putting in an emergency access point, those who were in power should recuse themselves from making a final decision. So I think that that would be very fair to all parties. So somebody can come back and call you out as a council member and say, you're against this, and this is against that, and you avoid these heated discussions, they need from a conflict resolution 101, you've got to take, as council members, the responsible position to recuse yourself from any sort of inappropriate behavior or potentially alleged inappropriate behavior, wrongful actions that could potentially be litigated against the city. I think the city council can, can speak to that very clearly. But I think, as a resident and have been here for a long, long time, I've seen only good things happen when you take the high road, okay? And I've spoken to Title Wave, I'm a big fan of theirs, for many, many years, they've been kind, they've been generous with their time, you've been generous, everybody's been generous with hearing citizens' comments, and I think council members should consider those who are responsible, whether it's real property, or it's hospitality, or public works, or public safety, if there's a critical decision and there's this much anxiety between the two parties, I think that this council, it's beholden upon council to appoint somebody else, recuse yourself from making a final decision, so somebody can't come back and say, you're the reason why this didn't get done. So as a citizen, I would expect that from council. Otherwise, I think it's an unfair process. And that's a very respectful way to say, people are making a living, they should go through the proper leasing channels, they should go through the proper legal channels, they should listen to the city manager, by the way, congratulations, once again, and it shouldn't be targeted. When I sat back there and I watched what happened, and I saw you lean over to the mic, that's really contentious, nothing's gonna get done, and people are going to say, you're pitted against them, they're pitted against you. I don't think that's fair. I don't think it's fair to the residents. I certainly don't think it's fair to the tourists and the visitors who are basically feeding the city with tourist dollars. And I would just ask once again, my last time, to the mayor and to all council members, please, if this is the situation that's happening, and you're pitted against one against the other, do the responsible thing, recuse yourself, and allow others to make the decision. All the council members have a responsibility to the city. Make it clean, make it transparent, and most of all, kind of make it friendly, because everybody's trying to do the right thing. So thank you for your time and your service.
Anyone else? What was? Rice? Back on to business. Okay, reports from standing committees, Ways and Means, Chairman Ward.
Before these people of Wild Dunes leave, I'd like to ask a question. Are we gonna write an address ad in public settings? Oh, we know, we can't. Okay. They're mine. See, we can talk about it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so Ways and Means Committee met at 5 o'clock Tuesday, July 16th, and we've called a order, everybody was present, except for Ken Mo, Rice, the United Assistant Commendance Financial Statement Representative, Trevor Shug, and for fiscal year 19 just ended, we have really good results. Cash on hand is about $18,900,000, as opposed to $15,401 at this time last year. June notice, the city continues to experience positive financial results in June, while significant revenues and some expenses will still be accrued. The current forecast presents the general fund in approximately $1.9 million to the good as compared to budget. Transfers into the general fund from tourism fund primarily cover public safety and public works personnel costs have been booked according to the budget. The forecast assumes all potential general fund gains and rolling of capital projects running here, course council will make that final recommendation once the audit is complete. The largest contributors to positive net results are revenues, business license, $416,000 over budget, building permits, $380,000 over budget, parking fees, $130,000 over budget. Of course, we did make some significant changes to policies and on fees. Expenditures, vacancies in City Hall, police and public works account for savings of approximately $470,000. Other savings in professional services, $124,000 under budget, utilities, $67,000 under budget, and training, tuition reimbursement, $54,000 under budget. So the total fund balance is, or anticipated to end the year, $2.1 million, higher than the 6318 fund balance. This is approximately $5 million better than anticipated due to general fund gains discussed above. $393,000 in under budget grants from Charleston County related, trade phase two, and the impact of delays and spending for several expenditures that have been rebudgeted a part of the year 20 or 21 projects. Those savings won't go into related primary accounting differences only. So we ended the year on a good note. Thought it would not start until October, I think.
Correct.
And that was about it as far as the prime and financial reports with the project worksheets. I won't bore you with those. And then we discussed under new business, discussion proposed about a amount of leverage on Palm Boulevard, that was preliminary, council heard full presentation also, and the recent data, get all run together, it seems like. But that's in process, and then I'll turn it over to Mayor, so we had a couple of...
Action items?
Action items, sure.
So we have an award of a contract to Trident Construction in an amount of $395,646.90 for Phase Two of the Public Safety Building Rehabilitation Project.
Motion to approve.
Sir, second, discussion. Here and then, all on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Unase, unanimous, and that's...
That's B, and then we got C. You've got to hear... All questions on Title Wave, what if we're sleeping? Okay, I got the whole difference, all right.
There's not, there's not an action item on the agenda.
Yeah, no, okay. And then, no other action items, they're, they're here. So our next meeting day will be 5 o'clock Tuesday, August 20th, and there, end of report.
Great, great, thank you. Any questions, anyone? Here and then, Public Safety.
Public Safety, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety met Monday, July 1st, all committee members were present, as well as the administration. Under citizens' comments, we basically had the same group that was here, if not larger, and some smaller. in a smaller room. Much smaller, giving their same opinion. They gave their consideration, we listened to them. We had discussion on that. We did have, we did have a motion come out of public safety, just, you know, in support of them, and to form DOT that the city's not in favor of the emergency as proposed at that time, and I know there have been some updates since then. Mudon, we had an update for a development of a code for dilapidated structures, which will be later on in our agenda. We're still having status update of their surveillance camera, Drew Chinla. The administrator reported that she spoke with Andy Benke of Sullivan's Island, and he's willing to share cost in the monthly, share in the monthly cost. So we're still gathering the pricing on that as we move forward.
I would just clarify that they're interested in evaluating the possibility of...
Correct. He was willing, oh, yeah. Correct. Yes. We did have some discussion installing bike lanes for Forty-first to Fifty-seventh is something that we've been working on with COG, and trying to reevaluate and reword our, the way we ask for those ones. We had some discussion, because it was brought up during the last council meeting, crosswalks between Forty-first, from Forty-first Avenue to the second gate. And we're still trying to work with DOT and where we can evaluate, where we can put a crosswalk in, because it's usually at an intersection. So we're still moving forward with that. Kind of move through here. As for motion, our new business, we did have this consideration of approval of a mutual aid agreement with the Council of Sullivan's Island that had put dormant on us. That will come up later in our, for votes. And that was basically end of our discussion in our next meeting in September.
Okay. Well, on that mutual aid agreement, that is an action item. And I'm going to ask Chief Cornet to come up front, maybe kind of brief everybody.
Make sure my radio's off.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Prior to my arrival as the chief, Chief Griffin from Sullivan's Island had reached out in reference to a mutual aid agreement with the City of Iowa-Lapalma Police Department. I did look into all of our mutual aid agreements when I got here. We currently only have a current mutual aid agreement with Mount Pleasant and the City of Charleston. And in two thousand sixteen, the laws changed, which required us to go back and redo most mutual aid agreements. Only two cities that had been done with so far. So this is just an agreement that would give us the ability to share resources with Sullivan's Island, and for them to do the same thing for us, should we have a state of emergency or something like that. And we do commonly work together very closely. It just kind of tightens everything up to make sure we're doing it the legal way.
Hearing none, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? Ayes, advocate. Thank you, chief. And so ends your report. Any questions?
I do want to clarify a little bit about the discussion related to the Wildwood exit from Wild Dunes. Back early last year, or I think it was in the spring of last year, now all the dates are kind of melding together, we had a downed power pole between Forty-first Avenue and Forty-sixth Avenue. And that required public safety to block access from that area on Palm. There were, I think it took about five or six hours to fix that power pole. So access within Wild Dunes, outside of the gates, was blocked up for that, for that amount of time. Residents from Wild Dunes reached out to the Wild Dunes Community Association Board at the annual meeting, and through their committee process and their board, and asked them to consider something to address that vulnerability. If something would happen again between Forty-first and Forty-six, there's no true access, emergency access, for getting inside and outside the gates. They have used an exit from Forty-first Avenue and through Wildwood, which is what's being requested right now, but there's nothing solidified, there's nothing official that would give the residents from Wild Dunes the peace of mind that should something happen in public safety, police or fire has to block access on Palm, that they would have the ability, the police and fire have the ability to get into Wild Dunes if Palm, that section of Palm is blocked, or that emergency vehicles can exit Wild Dunes. So they reached out to SADOT, reached out to the city, Dave meaning the Wild Dunes Community Association, and suggested this, several alternatives to SADOT. SADOT recommended the approach through Wildwood Avenue, Wildwood Road. There is a publicly owned right-of-way there, so they would need an approach and permit from SADOT. The residents from Wildwood Road came to the meeting, the public safety meeting, and expressed some concerns. I think that there were questions about what really constitutes an emergency. Is this going to be abused? Is this going to end up being a, an entrance and egress and egress from Wild Dunes? And I just want to clarify that the intent is to have a public, a public safety access, an emergency access to Wild Dunes. We have evaluated that from police, from our, you know, public safety personnel, our both chiefs, and have weighed, have weighed in, and do recognize that there is a vulnerability there. Should something happen, let it be a fatality accident, or a fire between Forty-first and Forty-six that requires, you know, access on, on that road to be blocked. So it is not meant to be an exit or an entrance, an additional exit or additional entrance to Wild Dunes, but only one that our public safety personnel would have access to, and only upon their decision would be open. So we're still working with them. We, I called a meeting yesterday for everybody together, because I felt like there were some misconceptions and misinformation of what is being requested. So everybody, we gathered in the same room, we had SADOT, the Wild Dunes Community Association, residents from Wildwood, our, our police chief, our fire chief, myself, Douglas, Dave Kienowski, and we're talking about different alternatives. There was presented, like Stuart Coleman, one of the residents from Wildwood, suggested an alternative. It's being evaluated, the complication with that alternative, which is through Morgan's Cove, tying into the Morgan Creek Harbor parking lot and out to Forty-first Avenue, it's, that area is all private property. So there's, you know, private property owners, the association who owns the parking lot. So it becomes a little bit more complicating, getting everybody to agree that that exit should go through down, down that area. But Dave Kienowski agreed to go back and to their committee and to study that alternative and come back to the city. So we'll be presenting that to public safety again. I just, I want to make you all aware that this is a request that came from citizens and residents from Wild Dunes, who were concerned that should that happen again, which hasn't happened in twenty years, I think it was, that was the only time that that section of Palm Boulevard has been blocked, should that happen again, that they're going to have the ability to get out and for public safety personnel to get in as well.
Well, but you know, we can give our concerns and our opinions and suggestions, but right now, the state really doesn't have a whole lot of say perhaps, unless it's an influx or what's being used. But I mean, DOT wanted to go through and utilize certain aspects of their right-of-way. They can do so.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. So ends your report. Public Works had no meeting in July. That was a quick regash. Recreation, no meeting in July, another one. Personnel, no meeting in July. Real Property, Mr. Bell?
Real Property Committee meeting was held at nine AM Wednesday, July third. Council members, friends, and ward were present. In terms of citizens' comments, we had none. Jay Clark of Morgan Creek did ask that docks on the Intercoastal Waterway that released to the restaurant from June first, two thousand nineteen, be reassigned until the end of the lease term, October thirty-first, two thousand twenty. As we just discussed, there was a vote on assigning to Title Wave a dock from the Morgan Creek docks, and that was moved back for further discussion. And as City Administrator stated, we have not taken any action on that as a consequence of not having permits in place, which I might comment, no knowledge whatsoever going into this, whether we had or did not have permits, nor was it ever asked from the Real Property Committee. From old business, we have status of the Marina docks rehabilitation project and permitting process. Kirby Marshall from ATM has stated that we are ready to submit the final documents in the permitting process for the Marina docks to DHEC and the Corps of Engineers, including the updated maintenance and the operations manual. It was recommended, and again, and I'm not going to get into the, what folks feel are personal attacks, which I can assure you they are not, I'm acting under the guidance of City Administration. We've been instructed not to take actions as it relates to Title Wave until such time that we do have some rulings back from OCRM as to the permitting process. So Desiree, I don't know if you want to comment on this, but it's, you know, in terms of dockable space and what we're doing, we are waiting, you know, roughly a hundred-and-twenty-day period, not years, to get an answer back from OCRM as to what's permitted to operate from the Title Wave dock. Desiree?
Sure. I think that there's a little bit of confusion from OCRM. Dealing with these state agencies, it's always the most easiest thing. There's a lot of nuance in the law, the permits, the applications. My recommendation was to wait until we can understand what OCRM and the Corps are willing to permit, because we currently have no permit. And my concern is finding ourselves in the same situation where we are right now, where there is discrepancy between the lease agreement and the permit application. Certainly, it's an option for City Council to renegotiate a lease, go out for bid, and maybe condition that lease, depending on what the permit is. I just, in my mind, it's fair for anybody entering into an agreement to get, to know what they're entering into. It's certainly up to City Council. I think it's just, from our perspective, from the recommendation from ATM, from our attorneys, is to wait until all that's in place. Certainly, it's not convenient for the tenant, and I'm very sympathetic to it. Certainly, another option to condition the lease pending what the permit application process comes back. Whether or not we want to take that risk, whether or not the tenant wants to take that risk, remains, remains to be seen. It was also talked about, the waiting to see the results of the Lee and Associates. I think that the reason why that was brought up through Real Property, or made a comment in Real Property, was the city currently controls very little real property in the Marina. We have this lease that's up for renewal in October of two thousand twenty, and the restaurant lease in October, September of two thousand twenty. And it was, it was believed that this would give the city additional leverage and additional flexibility to decide what happens with that location. It has been talked about, a potential public dock that was part of the Marina referendum plan. So in my mind, if, if City Council wants to do something different, which I don't think that y'all have had the opportunity to decide whether or not that's your, part of your vision, or part of your desire to do something different with that dock, now would be the time, because those leases expire.
All right. I'm going to, I'm going to add to that, and we're a little bit off, and ask Desiree again for further clarification. At no time has Real Property, myself, or anybody else deviated from the city's instructions as to what to do regarding this lease. It's on the city's instructions that should we have another lease, regardless of what's been brought before the council, that it would need to go to bid. Right?
Just to clarify, the...
Or recommended to go to bid.
Correct. I think that the City Council had made a statement last year that any new lease, any new contract should go through the competitive bidding process.
Correct. As is the restaurant.
As, I guess, as the restaurant is going. Certainly, City Council is not required, and I made that point at the April twenty-third meeting. The code gives the city the flexibility to decide whether it's in the city's best interest to go through the request for proposals method. That's up to City Council. Whether or not they want, you want to go through the request for proposals method for a new lease, or an amendment to a lease, y'all have that flexibility. It was my understanding from a policy standpoint that competitively procuring new contracts was what we were instructed to look into. We did that for beach monitoring. The city has had a sole-source contract with CSC for many years. We put that out for bid. So it's, it's just been a different, a shift, I guess, when we're looking at some of these large contracts or leases, that we go out for bid. Y'all have the flexibility. It's not, the code doesn't require you to do that. It is an option that you have available.
And may I continue?
Yes, sure.
Yeah. Second issue, and I'm going to clarify along the way as well. There has been no discussion, other than what this council has already voted on regarding any lease, and the reason that that vote, and I think it was explained in Ways and Means, not covered tonight, the vote that was before council was for, was strictly because that lease required a one-year written period of notice if we weren't going to renew that lease with those lease terms. It was brought forward in Real Property, it was brought forward to the council, a proposed new lease, the appropriate venue, and, correct me if I'm wrong, Desiree, was not to treat the old lease with a complete change to triple-net gross income as if it were an extension of that lease. So following the city attorney's advice, following the city administration's advice, that lease was brought forward through Real Property Committee, appropriately so, and voted on as to whether we would or would not renew that lease. It has nothing to do with the proposal put forward, nothing to do with the will of Real Property or the council to deal or not deal with that. That subject has not been broached at this point. So again, you know, I would encourage anyone that has any concerns about the professionalism or conduct of Real Property Committee, go back and listen to the minutes of the meetings. It's real simple. I don't appreciate the personal attacks, frankly, in implying that we're not doing our job as a council.
Randy, let's keep going.
Yeah, I can do that, although there was a ten-minute dissertation, which was quite frankly a personal comment. All right. New business, presentation discussion of proposed development of eleven-hundred Palm. We had gentleman Jeremy Graves come forward with a proposed plan. He is a local developer for the eleven-hundred Palm section, and is negotiating to acquire that property and bring forward a, for lack of a better term, a boutique hotel. We did not have a lot of discussion, because frankly, the audiovisual went out during the Real Property, well, actually never worked, and the internet was out the same day. A very complex project, which was brought forward to the full Ways and Means Council to let all of council listen to it. I think the only comment to make for that is going to, in all likelihood, redevelop eleven-hundred Palm. It was put before this council of Ways and Means, that we would have to look and entertain as to whether or not we were willing to undergo any ordinance changes to allow his proposed development to move forward. Status of public safety building rehab project, Trident Legal Council working on the contract documents for the second phase of the work. The cost will be paid from the five million two hundred thousand dollars budgeted for the project as directly related to the repairs and replacements recommended by the contractor. Other old business, status of the Marina Restaurant RFP, from John Chelfy and Lee and Associates. All of those offers, well, the offers were made public. The call for offers was made public on June twelfth, and the offers are due by the end of workday on August thirty-first. There was some discussion of rent abatement for Marina tenants. That was directly related to the overage of time that it took the contractor to complete the underground storage tanks, and the administrator explained that the thirteen-thousand-five-hundred dollars included in the FY twenty budget will be used for Marina's loss of revenue from the dock collapse. There was discussion of the review of insurance policies in place for the city property and the applicability of the IOP Marina. Councilmember Ferenc was interested in knowing if the city's insurance covered any damages to those docks and loss of revenue to the city from Morgan Creek Grill or Marina Joint Ventures. Desiree, the administrator said she needed to review the policies to know if we had any loss of business protection or loss of revenue protection. And we had some discussion as to whether we could raise the amounts of coverage to, frankly, be able to gain some of the money back that we've begun to lose, and that the insurance coverage isn't adequate to cover. Given the condition of the docks and what we're going through with the dock rehab project, it was stated that it was highly unlikely that we'd be able to make any insurance policy changes at this time. And in old business, discussions of next steps related to the findings by McKay hitting on the Peter Pond procedures, we went into executive session, were no decisions made. There was no miscellaneous business, and the next meeting date is scheduled for Wednesday, September fourth, two thousand nineteen, but no meeting scheduled for August.
Any questions for Real Property? Yes. So exactly, my answer on subject, where do we stand with Title Wave in regard to Morgan Creek?
Creek having control of those docks? And I thought there was some discussion that Jay and tidal wave could work it out.
We've got it.
That special session was not-
That's coming up?
Yes, sir.
That was not in Real Property.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I was just gonna reiterate my hope that we have an earlier than later discussion, full council discussion about the Marina. Even if we can't make any decisions now, there's a lot of moving parts going around, and I think, I have, I think we all have a lot of questions, and we could build a foundation for moving things along.
I am looking at the end of August as a potential time. We are planning the sewer, the sewer session with I O P Water and Sewer Commission and City Council from mid-August.
September, early September.
Early October, I think, but maybe September would be good.
Just do keep in mind, September, and Desiree helped me with this, because the bids are due in on Lee and Associates on August 31st. They stated two to three weeks to go through the bids. So when you lay a, frankly, multiple complex subjects on top of each other, you're going to have a very frankly convoluted process. I mean, I understand what people are saying about a visioning session for the Marina, but I keep those two separate, because we will be having bids come in, and that in and of itself is gonna be a pretty complicated process.
Any other questions?
Comment?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make a distinction again, because we seem to gloss over it, between going out for bid on something, which I am all in favor for, whatever possible, as a good government practice, versus a tenant that has options. And in this regard, it's different. We keep comparing it to the restaurant. It's different than Morgan Creek. Morgan Creek had extended its options. There are still two options that should this council choose, we could honor, either as our or as a renegotiation. We simply chose not to do that. But let's not forget, when we describe this, that it's, they have options in that agreement with us currently, just as if you were a tenant for an apartment and you had an option. The landlord chooses to honor that option or not.
Okay, thank you.
Give me if I may, I want to make one other comment, then I'll let this subject rest. What was conveniently left out of the discussion, and I will reiterate and say the same thing. I'm following city instructions as to what process to go through with tidal wave. Multiple times, Michael has challenged and said, Jimmy, this is a good comment, so please, I would not want another water sports company there, to which I said, that is correct. The decision in front of this council is, do we have a water sports company there? I'm not advocating any difference from that. So to Councilmember Kinghorn's comment, that's a discussion before council, not, you know, personal about tidal wave.
Thank you, very much. So ends your report.
So, well, my report is already ended.
Okay. No other questions. Moving on. Reports from city officers, boards, commissions, accommodations, tax advisory, no meeting in July. Boards of zoning appeals, no meeting in July. Planning commission, admittance are attached. Reports from special or joint committees, none. Petitions referred or disposed of, none. Bills already in possession of council. Second reading, 2019-12. An ordinance amending to Title VII, licensing regulations of the City of Alpam's Code of Ordinances, Chapter Three, Beach and Marine Recreation Regulations. That has to do with filming on the beach. Establish a permitting process and fee for requests of commercial photographs, film, video on a beach that is of very low impact. After review, staff may approve small, non-obtrusive projects. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes aye, unanimous. Second reading, ordinance, 2019-14. An ordinance amending Title VI, Health and Sanitation, Chapter Two, Animals, Articles, Bee, Dogs, of the City of Alpam's ordinance, to recommend all dogs, residents and non-residents, to have a written permit from the city at no cost and state issued tag to serve as a proof of rabies inoculation, and to adopt a language in the ordinance to require proof of current rabies inoculation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes aye, unanimous. Moving on. Second reading, ordinance, 2019-15. An ordinance to authorizing the City Administrator of the City of Alpam's to execute the necessary documents to enter into a certain Fourth Amendment to commercial lease agreement between the City of Alpam's and Barrier Islands LLC, attached hereto as exhibit and incorporated herein by reference. Do I hear a motion? This has to do with the Marina dock for Morgan Creek.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
As stated in this amendment, it still states that there will be one boat, there will be two jet skis, et cetera, et cetera. So we need to amend this ordinance, so that it does not state specifically what that one dock was to be used for. That was our discussion. My understanding is, we can't, we couldn't change it in the first reading, it has to be changed now, and then we vote on the amendment, so that that amendment can in fact be in place, rather than the verbiage that you'll find in this agreement.
So would you like to make an amendment to the motion?
Yes, the original, back in, of the Ways and Means, it was stated that the Marina docks, or the Morgan Creek docks, would be referred back to Morgan Creek in their lease, and it would be between, I don't even think we need to mention it.
Period.
No, period. Period. That those four docks would go to Morgan Creek. Now, as discussion, the fact is that then Morgan Creek will negotiate with tidal wave the use of a slip for their use. If we just say, we're referring those four slips back to Morgan Creek Grill Restaurant, as it has been in the past, then it's between Morgan Creek and tidal wave to make the agreement.
Does that amend it? That's it.
That's the amendment. That we simply-
Second. Discussion on the amendment.
Before y'all vote on the amendment, let me clarify about what, how that amendment is going to be translated into the agreement. On page 65, in your packets, which is page two of the Fourth Amendment to Commercial Lease Agreement, where it says, starting from, from July 4th, 2019 to September 30th, 2019, tenant agrees to allow tidal wave watersports the exclusive use of at least one slip for storage purposes of a jet dock and/or one twenty-four and a half foot motorboat and two jet skis. That would be stripped out of the agreement.
Right.
And just assuming, I guess, that Morgan Creek and tidal wave will work together in agreement to allow for storage purposes of whatever equipment they need to store.
Is everybody clear with the amendment?
Yeah, but I have to one other thing. This amendment expires at the end of September this year. I would like to make an amendment to the amendment to extend this to the conclusion of the Morgan Creek Grill.
Um, no, the, when you sit, when you look at page one and two, it says that it's valid and through October 31st of 2020.
You changed it then, already?
It, no, that hasn't, that hasn't changed.
The original discussion coming out of the, the-
I think what, you may be referring to-
I'm okay with it if that's the date.
Yeah. It would be given back to Morgan Creek Grill through the end of their lease in 2020.
Okay, I withdraw.
Okay.
But all, but just for clarification. We're eliminating the references of completely the tidal wave, so that takes out the September date you were concerned with.
Correct.
We're all on the same page.
Correct.
All of those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion carries your names, you're back to the original.
Yes, so now you need, you need a motion to approve the ordinance for second reading as amended.
Motion to approve second reading amended.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Unanimous.
All right. That was easy.
Okay. New bills, resolution propositions. First reading by title on the ordinance, 2019-6. Title, Health and Sanitation, Chapter One, General Provisions, Article B, nuisances, and Article C, Maintenance of Property, City of Alpam's Code of Ordinances. This text, the ordinance, is taken from the International Property Maintenance Code. City does not opt for IPMC in its entirety. It only applies to occupied buildings, and Public Safety Committee wanted a code that would also apply to vacant structures and homes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Right here, second.
Second.
Any discussion?
And to wait for reading.
No discussion, first reading.
Oh, yeah, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
And- This ordinance will go back to public safety for further review before it comes before full council for second reading.
Mr. Lance, for those who are left here in the audience, filing for the November election will begin on August the 5th. Filing fee for Alpam's City Council is a hundred dollars. And in Bowe City Hall, the filing period ends promptly at noon Monday, August 18th.
Scared anybody away for part of the night.
Next meeting, 6:00 PM Tuesday, August 27th. No executive session needed. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Set, all in favor? Aye. Thank you all for your patience. Welcome everyone to the Alpam City Council Public Hearing, today is July 23rd. I'd like to acknowledge that both the press and the public have duly notified of this meeting in accordance with the Freedom of Information Act. The purpose is to talk about two different ordinances. Ordinance 2019-08, an ordinance to establish the standards for replacement of small wireless facilities in covered areas in the city of the Alpam's, South Carolina, and for other purposes. I'm gonna actually let Desiree kind of go into details, and that's because we're quite ready.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Yes, this is public hearing for ordinance 2019-12 and ordinance 2019-15. No, no, what's the number?
Oh eight.
Oh eight, thank you. 2019-08 is the Small Wireless Facilities Ordinance. We're taking a model ordinance prepared by M A S C, and there's still some quite of work that needs to be done in that ordinance, so we will be deferring this public hearing until that work is conducted. It's not a zoning ordinance, but it will include an application permit, a permit application for these companies that are gonna be submitting to the city, asking for permission to install these small wireless facilities on, on the island, so that, because it includes a fee associated with a permit, it needs to have a public hearing, but we're not there yet. It still needs a lot of work, so we, we're really taking our time to make sure that whatever we bring before you all is consistent and it's what, exactly what we need. So we're gonna be working, doing some more work, and presenting that to Real Property at, at your last, next meeting. The other ordinance that's up for, for public hearing is 2019-12. This is the film permit, which would be creating a, a permit process for folks that wanna film, video, or still photography on the beach, or any public, public property in the city. There would be a permit processing fee of $75, and also additional fees that will be determined depending on the filming activities and whatever personnel that they need, or any assistance that they need from the city. Again, this ordinance is up for second reading, and we are recommending City Council to approve second reading and ratify it.
And that will come up later on during our council.
Correct. That's it.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn the public hearing? Do we need anything from the public?
You can, probably comment if-
Comments.
One was?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have about 13 minutes to kill. Get up and stretch your legs before we do it.